Good afternoon and welcome to the July 31st, 2025 special meeting in the Georgetown County Council. Please note for the record, we do have a quorum present. Please join us as Reverend, Council Reverend Cooper leads us in the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we look to you today to offer the finished of our faith. And we ask for God that you would order our step. We thank as we come together, Lord, and direct our path. But we declare decree that it's already done. It is in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Plaids allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic which is strength, one nation, America, individual liberty and justice.
Thank you. The Chair hereby recommends a move to amend the agenda to remove item S.C., to remove Agenda Item 5C from deferred or previously suspended issues and remove Ordinance 2522, an ordinance to amend and add definitions to Chapter 5.5, Article 2, Section 5.5-16 Beach Regulations, to regulate fishing on public beaches and to provide for public safety on beaches from the agenda entirely and from further consideration by the Council. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Mercado. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a few things.
Councilor Newton?
I totally agree with the way we're doing this. I think this council should vote this agenda down and we should move 2522 back to the agenda and it should be voted on tonight. If you want it to pass, then you vote for it. If you don't, you vote against it. But the way, this has not been handled properly from the get-go. Let's put it out in the sunshine, bring it before this council tonight, and vote it up or down. But this is the only way to put this to rest. If DNR is involved with it, let DNR do their thing, whatever they see fit to do. We don't do their job and they don't do ours. But the way we are doing this here, I do not agree with, I think is wrong. I think we're better than this. Let's load on it, get it done with, and move on. But I urge Council to do not approve this agenda as it is written.
Thank you, Councilor Newton. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, just for clarification purposes, really, as far as that particular item, I'm trying to think where else is it on the agenda personally because the agenda is basically just asking to...
5C.
Where is it?
5C.
5C, okay. So you're basically saying to keep it at 5C so we can vote it up and down at that particular point?
Correct.
And with that being said, really, it really has caused some disturbance upon me also as far as what we are going to do. I know we want some information regarding the beach regulations and everything and access and those type things. I mean, maybe delaying a particular process. But in the meantime, it seems as though by, and I agree with Councilor Newton, it seems like by us just removing it from the agenda, I don't know where that would actually place us. Does that kill it? Can we bring it back anytime we so want? Or just what are we doing? I'm not certain what it does.
It can be brought back at the very next meeting.
Yeah, yeah. And really what we're saying, we need more work on this particular ordinance and we need some time to actually do that. And so I'm in agreement with Councilor Newton. Let's put it to rest once and for all. I know once we do that, we can't do anything to beach regulations for another year or so. But so far, we have some regulation out there now. It's just a matter of how it's going to be interpreted and how it's going to be enforced. So there's something out there. It's not like we just don't have anything governing the beach at this particular point. We do have something. And our residents are basically saying that they think as it is right now and it's not proper. So we need to take another closer look at it and do the right thing to please our constituents, really, and go forward with it.
So we would need to bring it back from deferral to be able to vote on it?
It could be.
I guess that's a question for...
It could be. Just a motion made for it to be voted on unless I'm wrong. It's not on the consent agenda. If it was on the consent agenda, then it could be objected to and it'd have to be removed. Any council member can do that.
But it's because it's deferred, we would have to bring it back as a motion first, right? And then...
I have about four of you looking at me, but none of you have asked me a question. Is that a question for me?
It is a question for you.
All right, let's try to untangle this. First, you have a motion pending by the Chairman. And that motion, in essence, says that we would move, the council would move this item up from deferred and then remove it from the agenda entirely and further consideration by council. That's the pending motion. Now, Councilman Newton, if I understand your motion correctly, you were saying, let's bring it up for a vote?
Bring it up for a vote.
As though it were a third reading?
Correct.
That would be out of order because you cannot bring it up for a third reading vote from a deferred status. If it were on the agenda for third reading. So what you could do, if you wanted to do that, you would need to leave it on the deferred tonight and then put it on for third reading at your next meeting. But it would be out of order to bring it up, make it a third reading item, and then vote on it tonight. You're not, that's not giving proper notice to the public. Now, let's address an issue that Mr. Moran raised about what does this do if we do it this way? And I think, Mr. Newton, you commented that the council's better than this and put it in the sunshine. What you're doing is, by this motion that the Chairman has raised, I believe, is saying, we've heard the public and we're just going to remove it from any further consideration. Now, if you leave it in deferred, you put it on for third reading at the next meeting and you vote it up or down, if it passes, it passes. If it fails, it fails. But you cannot touch it again then for a year if it fails, if there's anything you want to do with it. And it probably could use some editing. The one that's on the books now was 1988. So it's fairly old and probably needs some change. That being said, I would also say if y'all were to vote in support of the Chairman's motion tonight and it's removed entirely from the agenda, I think the comment was made, well, it could just be put back on the next one. I would disagree for this reason. If it's removed entirely from the agenda, it's off the agenda. It's not on for third reading. It's not on deferred. And given that, whatever version would come back before council at this time, would, given all the input and discussions among council, would be, I think, I think it's reasonable to say, would be substantially different from the version that was read in at second reading, that version of the proposed ordinance, it would need to come back on, I would advise, and I think properly, that it would need to come back on, if at all, at a later date, as first reading, second reading, go all the way through the process again. Because I just don't see a version coming back on at third reading that's not substantially different and needs to run back through the process from second. So in essence, if you vote tonight, it's off the agenda. It stays off the agenda. It's not before council until at such time as council may say, let's reconsider that. And then it's probably going to be a much different version and it's going to need to go all the way back through the process, first, second, third reading.
I respect your opinion, but I totally disagree with you.
Well, I'm just telling you, your motion would be out of order tonight for third reading.
It's fine. Let's put it back on for third reading for the next meeting and vote on it. If that's what we have to do. Next meeting will be the...
If it's permanently deferred, if we kill it?
It's off the agenda. It's not deferred. It's off the agenda.
And the whole cycle has to begin again?
I'm sorry.
The whole cycle would have to begin again if someone wanted to bring it back and we voted it up or down?
Yes. And it is dead in the sense that it's not like a matter that has just been postponed and will be reconsidered at a later date. It is off the agenda. It's not before council for further consideration.
And it could not be brought back as third reading if it's off?
It's off the agenda. Right. So it's not, it's not back on the agenda at third reading. It's off the agenda. And the motion that says...
Meaning that no...
From the agenda entirely and further consideration by council. So, you know, and...
I don't, I don't, I just, I don't agree with the way this has been handled, that we're doing this tonight. And these seven here, you guys don't want to have a vote, you know, take what you've heard. But I disagree with the way we're doing this.
I guess my question is if we vote with the Chair, which is effectively to remove it off the agenda permanently, then we are voting to kill it, in quotes.
Yes, I think effectively. Now, Mr. Newton, just to be clear procedurally, because you have a motion as well that you've introduced, right?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, you're not just opposing the motion, you're also wanting to introduce a motion.
I think the way you're doing this here is a vote, like council always makes motions to approve. You don't make motions to deny. And this is basically making a motion to deny a deferred item, in my opinion.
That's not true. It's not, because you're not voting to take action on the item. You're removing it from the agenda. So you're not taking any action up or down on the item. It just comes off the agenda and off from further consideration by council.
It's basically denying how it's written.
We don't know. Council hasn't voted on how it's written. It's off the agenda.
Yeah, it was voted on. It was first reading, second reading. It was up to third reading before it was deferred. So it was voted on.
At second reading.
At second reading. So you're basically doing this. You're voting to deny instead of voting to approve.
Well, I'm not going to parse words or argue with you, but that's just not correct. But I think, you know, so council, you have, if you have a motion to, if your motion is, and we need to get it clear, if you're saying you have a motion to leave it in deferred status, then you've got two motions on the floor right now. You need to take them in order, the Chairman's motion to remove it entirely from the agenda and further consideration. If that one passes, then the second motion becomes moot. If that one fails, then you've also got a motion to consider of whether to leave it in deferred status. And if it stays in deferred status, then it is on the agenda until council then gives further direction on what to do with it and when to put it back on for third reading.
If I'm understanding council's, councilor's position here, basically you're saying that we cannot vote on the deferred motion this evening because it's not in the agenda for, because it's in a deferred status. So therefore, we can't vote it up and down this particular evening. So the motion that we have in front of the, in front of council right now, to just kick it off the agenda, forget about it, and let it go, then council can decide sometimes in the future whether to bring it back in its present state or in another state. That's what I'm hearing.
That's partly right. You could bring it back in the future, but I don't think in its present state. That's what I said. I think, and I think any version that would come back would be so radically different anyway.
But right now...
You run all the way back through, like any, like any ordinance, you would start the whole process over again, first, second, third reading. And again, it would be in a much different version.
So right now, if we were to...
If you ever want to consider it again within a year, then, you know, you would have that option. But you don't have to. I mean, the council could just say, nope, we're done with that for a while.
So effectively, if we were to go with the Chair's motion, then we would be effectively killing it at this particular point or taking out the agenda so that it's not in front of council for any type of discussion whatsoever at that point, once we take it off the agenda, if we were to go to Chair's motion?
Correct.
But it could be brought back up next month. Is that not correct?
Conceivably, yes. But then, you know...
That's what I'm getting to.
But any matter can be brought back up if council wants to put it on the agenda.
But if we vote on it, if we vote on it next meeting, it will not be brought back up. But Raymond, I understand what you're saying and I understand what he's saying. And the fact of the matter is, if we do what you want to do, we're out of order. So that nullifies the whole thing. So if we do this, I think that the seven people up here have debated this thing till the cows come home. And I think that there's no way, if we follow what Jay is saying we do up here, we will come out at the end with it going away. And if we ever want to amend the beach ordinance again, I can guarantee you that I'll be right there. The only thing I would ever approve with this...
Let me finish. Let me finish.
Well, I mean, your statement, I don't think is correct. Well, our lawyer's telling me it's correct. The beach ordinance, you're, we're dealing with the surf. But this was only an amendment to the beach ordinance.
Yes.
And so if we, if we come back to the beach ordinance again next year or whenever it is, as I said, if there's, if there is a bullet in there about shark fishing, I am hoping that it'll say that whatever the state, and I'm talking about DNR, decides to do about this problem, and maybe it's nothing, that we follow their guidance and we only put it in an ordinance so that, so that we can help at this level in carrying out that order with our Sheriff's Department. Does that make sense? If you're supporting as this is how it's written, though... No, I'm not supporting. I'm saying it's going to go away. This amendment is going to be dead. It's going to be dead because when we bring up the thing again, any change to the beach ordinance is not going to say anything about shark fishing, as far as I'm concerned.
Effectively, by voting with the Chair, does it effectively, like, do what Raymond's saying, that if we had to bring it up again, I don't want to waste people's time that really care about this. I don't want to waste the public's time. So, you know, we did this special meeting. We put it out to the public. Effectively, the goal is to, in quotes, "kill" this. And we're doing that. That is the goal. That's what the Chair put out there. And what Councilor Newton is suggesting is that we need to bring it back and officially vote on it, which in effect would also kill it in its form. So can we do what the Chair is saying to do through Robert's rules? Or do we have to bring it back in order to remove this ordinance?
I'm not sure I follow all that. So let me, let me try this again.
We want to do it the right way so that we don't waste the public's time.
This is an appropriate way to remove it from the agenda.
Okay.
All right. It is out of order to vote on it as though it were a third reading, a third reading tonight. That's out of order.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Newton, and to be clear with you, sir, you could, your motion could say that, you know, if you wanted to move to leave it in its deferred status, that motion could be entertained because it's on the agenda as a deferred item. So you can say, well, I'm not voting essentially in support of this, you know, and again, if it fails, then I move to leave it in deferred status. So it's now still on the agenda, okay? And it will be on the agenda. And it could be brought up again at a later meeting for third reading.
As it's written now.
As it's written now or in an amended version. But I don't think there will be an amended version that really y'all would be happy. at a later date, as first reading, second reading, go all the way through the process again. Because I just don't see a version coming back on at third reading that's not substantially different and needs to run back through the process from second. So, in essence, if you vote tonight, it's off the agenda. It stays off the agenda. It's not before council until at such time as council may say, let's reconsider that. And then it's probably going to be a much different version, and it's going to need to go all the way back through the process, first, second, third reading.
I respect your opinion, but I totally disagree with you.
Well, I'm just telling you, your motion would be out of order tonight for third reading.
It's fine. Let's put it back on for third reading for the next meeting and vote on it.
Does Jay...
If that's what we have to do.
If it's...
Next meeting will be the...
If it's permanently defer, if we kill it...
It's off the agenda. It's not deferred. It's off the agenda.
It's not, it's not dead.
And the whole cycle has to begin again.
What's that? I'm sorry.
The whole cycle would have to begin again if someone wanted to bring it back, and we voted it up or down.
Yes. And it is dead in the sense that it's not like a matter that has just been postponed and will be reconsidered at a later date. It is off the agenda. It's not before council for further consideration.
And it could not be brought back as third reading if it's off?
It's off the agenda. Right. So it's not, it's not back on the agenda at third reading. It's off the agenda. And the motion that says...
Meaning that no...
From the agenda entirely and further consideration by council. So, you know, and...
I don't, I don't, I just, I don't agree with the way this has been handled, that we're doing this tonight. And this, these seven here, you, you guys don't want to have a vote. You know, take what you've heard. But I disagree with the way we're doing this.
I guess my question is if we vote with the chair, which is effectively to remove it off the agenda permanently, then we are voting to kill it, in quotes.
Yes. I think effectively. Now, Mr. Newton, just to be clear procedurally, because do you, you have a motion as well that you've introduced, right?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, you're not just opposing the motion, you're also wanting to introduce a motion.
I think the way you're doing this here is, is a vote, like council always makes motions to approve. You don't make motions to deny. And this is basically making a motion to deny a deferred item, in my opinion.
No, that's, that's not true. It's not, because you're not voting to take action on the item. You're removing it from the agenda. So you're, you're not taking any action up or down on the item. It just comes off the agenda and off from further consideration by council.
It's basically denying how it's written.
We don't know. Council hasn't voted on how it's written. It's off the agenda.
Yeah. It was voted on. It was first reading, second reading. It was up to third reading before it was deferred. So it was voted on.
At second reading.
At second reading. So you're, you're basically doing this. You're voting to deny instead of voting to approve.
Well, I'm not going to parse words or argue with you, but that's just not correct. But I think, you know, so council, you have, if, if you, if you have a motion to, if your motion is, and we need to get it clear, if you're saying you have a motion to leave it in deferred status, then you've got two motions on the floor right now. You need to take them in order. The chairman's motion to remove it entirely from the agenda and further consideration. If that one passes, then the second motion becomes moot. If that one fails, then you've also got a motion to consider of whether to leave it in deferred status. And if it stays in deferred status, then it is on the agenda until council then gives further direction on what to do with it and when to put it back on for third reading.
If I'm understanding council's, councilor's position here, basically you're saying that to, we cannot vote on the deferred motion this evening because it's not in agenda for, because it's in a deferred status. So therefore, we can't vote it up and down this particular evening. So the motion that we have in front of the, in front of council right now, to just kick it off the agenda, forget about it, and let it go, and then council can decide sometimes in the future whether to bring it back in its present state or in another state. That's what I'm hearing.
Uh, somewhat. That's partly right.
Partly right.
You could bring it back in the future, but I don't think in its present state. That's what I said. I think, and I think any version that would come back would be so radically different anyway.
But right now...
You run all the way back through, like any, like any ordinance, you would start the whole process over again, first, second, third reading. And, and again, it would be in a much different version.
So right now, if we were to...
If you ever wanted to consider it again within a year, then, you know, you would have that option, but you don't have to. I mean, the council could just say, nope, we're done with that for a while.
So effectively, if we were to go with the chair's motion, then we would be effectively killing it at this particular point or taking off the agenda so that it's not in front of council for any type of discussion whatsoever at that point, once we take it off the agenda, if we were to go to chair's motion.
Correct.
But it could be brought back up next month. Is that not correct?
Conceivably, yes. But then, you know, it's...
That's what I'm, that's what I'm getting to.
But any, any matter can be brought back up if council wants to put it on the agenda.
But if we vote on it, if we vote on it next meeting, it will not be brought back up.
But you can, but Raymond, I, I understand what you're saying, and I understand what his, he's saying. And the fact of the matter is, if we do what you want to do, we're out of order. So that nullifies the whole thing. So if we do this, I think that the seven people up here have debated this thing till the cows come home. And I think that it, there's no way, if we follow what Jay is saying we do up here, we will come out at the end with it going away. And if we ever want to amend the beach ordinance again, I can guarantee you that I'll be right there. The only thing I would ever approve with this...
Ordinance can be...
Let me, let me finish. Let me finish.
Well, I mean, your statement, I don't think is correct.
Well, our lawyer's telling me it's correct.
The, the beach ordinance, you're, I'm, we're dealing with the surf.
But this was only an amendment to the beach ordinance.
Yes.
And so, so if we, when, if we come back to the beach ordinance again next year or whenever it is, as I said, if there's, if there is a bullet in there about shark fishing, I am hoping that it'll say that whatever the state, and I'm talking about DNR, decides to do about this problem, and maybe it's nothing, that we follow their, their guidance, and we only put it in an ordinance so that it, so that we can help at this level in, in carrying out that order with our sheriff's department. Does that make sense?
If you're supporting as this is how it's written, though it...
No, I'm not supporting. I'm saying it's going to go away. This amendment is, is going to be dead. It's going to be dead because when, when we pick, bring up the thing again, any, any change to the, to the beach ordinance is not going to say anything about shark fishing as far as I'm concerned.
Effectively, by voting with the chair, does it effectively, like, do what Raymond's saying, that if we had to bring it up again, I don't want to waste people's time that really care about this. I don't want to waste the public's time. So, you know, we did this special meeting. We put it out to the public. Effectively, the goal is to, in quotes, kill this. And we're doing that. That is the goal. That's what the chair put out there. And what councillor Newton is suggesting is that we need to bring it back and officially vote on it, which in effect would also kill it in its form. So, can we do what the chair is saying to do through Robert's rules? Or do we have to bring it back in order to remove this ordinance?
I'm not sure I followed all that. So let me, let me try this again. All right?
Want to do it the right way so that we don't waste the public's time.
Well, this, this is an appropriate way to remove it from the agenda.
Okay.
All right? It is out of order to vote on it as though it were a third reading, at third reading tonight. That's out of order.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Newton, and to be clear with you, sir, you could, your motion could say that, you know, if you wanted to move to leave it in its deferred status, that motion could be entertained because it's on the agenda as a deferred item. So you could say, well, I'm not voting essentially in support of this, you know, and, and, and again, if, if it fails, then I move to leave it in deferred status. So it's now still on the agenda. Okay? And it will be on the agenda, and it could be brought up again at a later meeting for third reading. Okay?
As it's written now.
As it's written now, or in an amended version. But I don't think there will be an amended version that really y'all would be happy with. And like I said, it would be so radically different probably that you would want to start the whole process over. So what this does, in this, in this motion that's, that the chairman has brought, moves it from deferred and says, take it off the agenda. We're not, in other words, we're not going to let this thing float indefinitely in deferred, and it's not going to be brought up for a vote at third because you know you're not supporting that. You're just taking it off the agenda. But it also leaves council the room if within a year or later, it wants to produce another version of it that's different and run it all the way back through the process, first, second, and third. And that is significant, Mr. Newton, because you're not saying we're going to bring the same ordinance back and sneak it in and vote it on third. That's not, I just don't see that happening because, like I said, if you take it off the agenda entirely, and any version that comes back would be so radically different from the one that was read in at second reading, that you'd be starting the process all over again. But it does leave that door open. But again, then you're going to be at first, second, third, time for public comments, time for public hearing. And, you know, you're, you're, that's a three to four month process at best, if, if ever council decides to put it back on the agenda.
After listening to council's explanation, I think we need to move forward with the motion. I think he explained it pretty good.
My understanding, we're still under the discussion part of the, the vote, since it had been seconded. And I'd like to also say, you know, when you, this, this council, there's seven of us, just be prepared to answer for your vote. You feel that strongly about it? You know, you go along with the agenda. If not, I encourage you, and I've stood along before up in this, this council by myself the long vote. No problem with it. There'll be many more to come, more than likely. But I encourage you to do not approve this agenda. Let, let that dog go.
Any further discussion?
Jay?
I encourage the opposite. We've spoken to a lot of people that care about this. It's their livelihood. And I think this is a path to put this to bed, kill it effectively, as we've said multiple times. And I would encourage the opposite. I don't want to keep the public in limbo any further. They've reached out to all of us individually via phone, email, text, social media, at least for me. And we need to put this thing to bed. Let it die. And if ever in the future, this ordinance needs to be brought back up, then we bring it back up, possibly even with a workshop, so that we can have the public's input instead of the way that it was done.
Please remember that this is not about fishing. This is our beach ordinance, which, it could come up the next time about not burning trash in the trash cans like we talked about. And that may be the end of it. Who knows? But it's not about fishing. This is about amending the beach ordinance.
To the public, it is about fishing.
Well, right. But I think they understand that we understand what they said. So this is the way, this is the way procedurally to get back to where, get the train back on the tracks.
Correct.
Okay.
I agree with you.
Jay, if we effectively put it back on agenda for third reading for next month, it dies for lack of emotion or lack of a second. It's completely dead. Does that mean that the entire chapter 5.5, Article 2, is no longer considered for a year? That's the entire beach regulation?
No, and that's...
Or is it just that one section?
I, I wanted to speak to that because Mr. Anderson's raised it a couple of times. No, I don't believe it does. Remember, the beach regulations has nine, I think it is, off the top of my head, nine parts regulating everything from riding horses to fishing is one of them, a number of things on there. So if, since the only thing that has been brought before council for debate and consideration has been number five, and I'm pretty certain, 99% certain, that the fishing is number five under beach regulations, number five, I think you would not be able to reconsider. The other eight, I think you, you fairly could because those have not been up for amendment, debate, discussion, public comment, anything. But again, at that point, you know, you're, you're starting over with first reading because those are all new. So let's say within a year at some point, you want to revisit, and there are issues council probably should visit. For instance, you know, people putting hot coals and stuff in some of the dumpsters and trash cans out there. We've got reports of that. If that happens, and you have a dumpster fire, and a wind catches it and takes it over in the marsh, you got a mess on your hands. So there's things under beach regulations you may want to consider at some point, but that's going to come up. That, that whole, let's just say, an overhaul of your beach regulations will come up as first reading. By this path, if you wanted to, within the eight, nine, you might have 10 or 12 at that point if you have other matters you need to address that have not been addressed in the current version that was passed in 1988. Under this path, you would also be able to address and update number five, the surf fishing, if you wanted or not. It leaves the option open. So, you know, council's got a lot of things under beach regulation it may want to consider. This allows them to look at the entire section if you remove it from the agenda. But again, none of you have said to me other than, hey, we might need to be thinking about fire in the, or hot coals in the dumpsters. No one's discussing anything else that I'm aware of. So it's not like that it's right around the corner that I have heard.
I think if we, the county publicly put information out with the goals for this meeting, and I think if we changed it now, it would, no pun intended, be like a bait and switch. So I agree that we need to vote on the chair's motion. And I already seconded it.
Any further discussion?
Does Mr. Newton need to withdraw his motion?
No. And I, again, we can clarify, Mr. Newton, if your motion is to vote, have a third reading, you just used that phrase, but have a third reading, vote on the amended ordinance, that's out of order tonight. If your motion is to leave it in deferred status where it is on the agenda tonight, that motion could be considered. All right?
That's the motion in order to bring it back for third reading at the very next council meeting.
If you want, so...
We need to vote in order.
You're taking option B. Is that what I'm hearing?
Option B.
Okay. All right. So you have a motion pending from the chair.
And seconded.
And seconded. So...
Mr. Newton's has not been seconded yet.
Well, I think you need to consider this motion first.
Okay.
And so, Mr. Chair, it's in your hands to close discussion, call for a vote or not.
If his motion, if this passes, then mine would be moot.
Correct.
So will we have to vote? We wouldn't have to vote on, because it's been removed from the agenda. So it would have to be...
It's off.
It's off. So we wouldn't have to consider councillor Newton's ruling.
Oh, no, that, that's different. If your motion passes, his becomes moot, as he said.
And then we just go on with amended agenda.
And you just go on.
Okay. All right.
Just to be clear, councillor Newton would need a second for his motion.
Correct.
Okay.
I think along those lines, I think in order to consider this, it seemed to me like, I think we have to consider councillor Newton's motion first, to call for this motion on the floor because to see whether you can get a second pertaining to that particular motion. Then if he does not get a second, then you go back to the original motion.
That's the normal procedure. Amendment, you vote on the amendment before you vote on the, the rest of the thing. So I'm, I'm correct there, I think.
I'm not sure I caught all of that, Mr. Barant, but, but, but did correctly. The motion that is pending is a motion to, well, first of all, you're at item number two on your agenda, approval of the agenda. There is a motion to amend the agenda to bring item 5C up from deferred and vote to remove it, which would then, it would, it would remove it entirely from the agenda. It's no longer 5C under deferred, so it's off.
Right.
That's what's pending now. And we, we had a second, we've had discussion, we've not had a vote on it. If that one fails, then I think it does stay, it simply stays in the deferred status. So actually, thinking it through, I don't think Mr. Newton's motion's even necessary at that point because it stays in deferred status.
What, just for clarification, if, if the water's not muddy enough already, to bring it out of deferred and bring it at the third reading would be the, the next council meeting. Would we not have, should put this on the agenda, that we were going to vote on it tonight to remove it from the agenda? Because it was not listed as such on the agenda.
No. Because you're not, it's a, it's in deferred status. So you're just saying we're moving this out of deferred and getting it off the agenda, as some of the others here, I think at some point y'all have done in the past as well. When you've got items on deferred and they, they just have been lingering, y'all have done that as well. So it's just getting it out of deferred status, taking it off. It's no longer an agenda item. It's no longer an item for council to consider.
So let's vote. Did you say let's vote, Raymond?
Yep. So there's a motion. There's a motion that's...
Okay. Just so I'm clear, though, we're voting on the chair's motion to amend the agenda first.
Correct.
Or do we have to vote on councillor Newton's?
No. And actually, thinking about it, if his motion, he took, when he wrote, Mr. Newton, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but when you realize that you couldn't vote on it as a third reading, up or down tonight, then you said, yeah, she wanted to, to vote to leave it deferred. But, but that, that's actually not even necessary because if this motion fails, it stays in deferred status. It's, it's on the agenda, it's deferred status, because your motion is to amend it, move it up from deferred, and get it off the agenda. So if that fails, it stays right where it is in deferred status.
Okay.
So now can we vote?
What's that?
Can we vote now on the chair's motion?
Are there any further discussion? All in favor of the amended, the, all in favor of the motion to amend the agenda, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed? The agenda is amended, six to one. Now we'll go back to the original motion, and we'll call for a motion to approve the meeting agenda as amended.
So moved.
So moved by councillor Mercado. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Morant. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? The agenda is approved, six to one. Move down to the consent agenda. We have one matter on the consent agenda. It was previously approved by virtue of the agenda approval process. We have 1,000 linear square feet, or 1,000 LF Technology Drive Extension at the Georgetown County Business Center, roadway and water and wastewater infrastructure project. Ms. Kelly Slagel is going to, Robertson Slagel is going to give us a brief summary of it. Ms. Slagel?
Good evening, council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly on this item. Santee Electric Cooperative partnered with Georgetown County to construct two speculative industrial buildings, each over 100,000 square feet, at the Georgetown County Business Center in Andrews. To support those developments, the county needed to extend Technology Drive, our industrial grade roadway, to install water and wastewater infrastructure to, to serve both sites. Under our original development agreement with Santee Electric Cooperative, was eligible to recoup up to $250,000 per building, or $500,000 total, to help cover those infrastructure improvements. However, due to the early success of the first building, which sold mid-construction to Zilmet USA, and after conversations with administrator Christian, Santee Electric Cooperative agreed to reduce its request to ju, to just 350,000. The total cost of the road and utility extension came to just over 1.14 million. This $350,000 contribution represents about 30% of the total, which is significantly below what the county originally committed to. The funds are already budgeted in our FY '26 Special Economic Development Fund, and this would, this payment would fulfill our remaining obligations under the agreement. This is a strong example of how our partnership with Santee Electric Cooperative delivers real value. Zilmet brought over 20 million in private investment and over 50 new jobs, and we were proud to all, most of us, to be there this past week for their ribbon cutting. The second building is now fully serviced and is being actively marketed as an additional, to additional industrial users, and we're hoping to have some news, some good news on that building soon. So the Department of Economic Development respectfully recommends approval of this payment, and we look forward to our continued collaboration with Santee Electric Cooperative to continue to grow jobs and investment here in Georgetown County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson Slagel. We move now to third reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 25-24, an ordinance to authorize an approving agreement for the development of a joint industrial and business park by and between Ory County and Georgetown County for the property located in Ory County at Postal Way, to require the payment of AP in lieu of abhorrent taxes by businesses and industries located in the park, to apply zoning and other laws in the park, to provide for law enforcement jurisdiction in the park, and to provide for the distribution of park revenues within Georgetown County. Have a report form from attorney Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Happy to report to council that this is a pretty straightforward motion. You just vote up or down and second, and, but it is, you call, we've got a number of multi-county industrial parks. This one, we would be the partner with Ory County. This park is in Ory County, so they will be managing it, running it, and revenues are shared with us as a partner county. And it's not had any changes since second reading. We would ask for your approval on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, attorney Watson. You've heard the report from attorney Watson. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
So moved by councillor Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Cooper. Is any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion passes, 7-0. All right. Is there any further business to come before the council at this time? Here, none of the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved by councillor Morant. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. This meeting is adjourned.